Okay, folks.
Seven second delay and then we have to...
I am proud to open the Georgetown Planning Board Wednesday, November 12th, 2014 meeting at seven o'clock. We're gonna begin with the approval of minutes. I don't know if you want to say anything on that, Howard?
Uh, no.
Anybody have any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 22nd, 2014, as corrected this evening, if any.
You're second?
Second.
So it's been motion and seconded to approve the minutes of October 22nd, 2014. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to look at the packet until recently. On page three, line 93, I thought that Steve was here. It says that he was not present, but I thought he was present.
I did too, come to think of it, yeah.
Yeah. He was sitting on the, on the side.
He didn't say anything.
No, no.
No, he was there.
No, it's actually, I'm sorry, it showed up on the video. Somebody assumed he was the owner and then they said, no, he wasn't the owner.
It was just like a...
He was just somebody that was there. You mean, there was a big heavy...
The big gentleman behind.
Yeah, he was not. The video actually, I remember watching this part on the video.
That's true during that, but there was, Steve was sitting over there at the end.
I think that's Steve...
There was a fairly large fellow in the back.
Well, nobody identified themselves as the owner and somebody actually assumed that was the other gentleman, so...
Usually you have a sign and sheet. Was there one there that...
We did.
And, yeah.
But he didn't identify himself at the meeting.
Is it woefully important that the owner be present?
No, but it's that you make note that he signed the application is a good thing.
Yeah, I have a question. If, if, if there's any concern about it, would we just want to just cross it out?
Sure, I mean, we can...
I don't think it's needed either way.
Yeah, the feeling was to make sure that he acknowledged the application. It's on the application, so that's all my thinking was.
Then maybe we could just say that the owner, Steve Bornakis, signed the site plan approval application. Instead of saying that he was or was not here, which may, may not have been...
I mean, he did sign it, right?
Yes.
So you got it. So I, I would, I mean, that's, that would, I would scratch 93 out then and just delete it. Because he didn't say that there, "I'm gonna sign it," or it's not a meeting matter per se, so...
Just kill 93, I guess.
Robert?
That's pretty much it. I mean, I do have a couple of questions, but they're really kinda trivial and they don't matter much, I don't think.
We miss the trivia.
Harry?
I wanna leave early.
There's no tough question now.
Yeah, there, yeah, sure there is.
There you go, there you go.
I've got better questions for later. I'm stacking them.
All set? Tilly?
Think they're great.
You all set? Okay, so seeing there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Set there. Correspondence, anything you wanna mention?
I just wanna point out that we received from the town of Georgetown, the fire department sent their review letter regarding the Richdale application. That's been made part of the file.
Moving on to, anybody had anything they want to talk about? Okay, moving on to vouchers.
As you can see, we have a new laptop that is functioning for our use. We still have the old one, but that is included in the vouchers. We've gone ahead and done some upgrades to the software on the older laptop, as well as ordering some office supplies and things for Mary Ellen to get comfortable in, in the planning office. So these are ordered through Staples where we have a, the town has a credit card instead of W B Mason.
Yeah, I wondered why that was.
Price shopping.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Wow.
And availability and...
I thought Mason gave us the better prices, that's why we always used him.
Staples actually gives you money back in check cartridges as well, and they give you rewards, or W B Mason doesn't always do something.
They don't give you any?
No.
I was wondering why, because they...
Anybody have a...
I have actually a couple of questions. So there were two purchases. In both, there was memory and in both, there was Windows and, and there were two, two mice. So those are the upgrades, memory, operating system and a mouse for the new machine and for the old machine.
We needed more memory for the old laptop in order to upgrade from XP, because it wasn't being supported anymore.
Yep.
And then we got a mouse for use on this.
Awesome.
As well as upgrading a complete version of the operating software.
Yeah, and the OS. Yeah, I think that, and did you get the same version of, you got 8.1 on both?
No, we have 8.1 on this, but the other one, you couldn't go from XP to 8.1, so it's on, 7's on the other one.
Okay, you'll like 7. You'll like 8.1.
I like 7 better than 8.1 personally.
I like 8.1 as well. I mean...
You'll notice I'm getting used to it tonight, so...
It has that Metro interface that you can ignore pretty much. You can boot it right into the standard.
I have the XP.
It's Xbox.
Are you saying that you can't get Windows 7 on the XP?
No, XP, XP is not being supported anymore, so they really have to upgrade.
In what? Where not supported?
In United, in the world. Microsoft may not supporting it anymore.
I haven't gotten any notice. That's mine, XP. I haven't gotten any notice that it's not gonna be working.
You won't be getting updates.
When it doesn't work anymore, you...
You won't get any, any new malicious software fixes. I would strongly recommend, Tilly, that you upgrade your software, your operating system.
Okay, folks.
Get somebody to do it for you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers.
I have one other question, and that's just what else included in the home student version of Microsoft Office? Word, Excel, PowerPoint, anything else?
Uh, Word and Excel. I don't think PowerPoint was included in it.
No, I don't think. It was, it was, it was just to mostly get the Word and the Excel.
Yeah.
Forget what was offered.
Um, do you, you don't make presentations? I would assume that you would...
We'd use this one for presentations.
Oh, and what does this have on it?
That's the A.
The full soup to nuts on it. This is 8.1.
That's the operating system, but Office is a separate product that includes...
It has a professional suite on this one.
Professional suite?
Yeah.
So that's great. That's excellent. No more?
No further questions, Your Honor.
Yeah.
I'll say.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I ever made the motion or not, but I'd like to make a motion to approve vouchers, totally $3,634.35.
Second? So motion's been made by Harry, seconded by Bob for $3,634.35 total. There are three invoices. Let's see, any discussion?
John?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearing, site plan approval. Howard?
We just need to open the public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and continue it.
Well, you opened it and I received an email from the attorney for the applicant stating to whom it may concern, please consider this a request for the applicant for the property at 70 West Main Street, that the public meeting that was scheduled for the aforementioned property be continued to the first meeting of the planning board in December.
It's a hearing, isn't it?
What's that?
Isn't it a hearing? It's a public hearing.
Yeah, he wrote public meeting, but it's a public hearing. So the applicant has requested...
To go 12, 12/10?
To 12/10.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for 70 East Main Street to December 10th, 2014.
Second? Okay, a motion's been made by Harry, seconded by Bob to continue the site plan approval, 70 East Main Street, public hearing to the December 10th, 2014 calendar date. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business, Park and Rec, special permit for major outdoor recreational facility draft decision. Howard?
Well, we finally received the completed set for the East Main Street Recreation Project. I wrote up a draft decision on the special permit, provided that in the packet, so would like to have everybody's comments and input at tonight's meeting so a final can be presented at the December 10th meeting. And the extension of time for the project ends in December. We're meeting once in November and once in December, so it's this one and the next one to get this done. They have submitted my ours. We just need to go through the paperwork of the decision and then at the next, signatures.
Right. Is, I'm sorry, is it okay to sign this in red and blood? I mean, in red?
As usual, I provided a decision that was intended a little bit more to take things out so we can have discussions on different elements of the decision as opposed to wondering why it wasn't put in.
It's verbiage rich.
Yeah.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, on page three of seven, paragraph E...
Are we gonna, are we gonna begin here, Robert?
I guess this is one of those insignificant things you really do.
Well, I mean, it was, he said the verbiage, he said the verbiage, and I had to say, "The burial of boulders in excess of 24 inches diameter may only be buried."
Where are ya?
On page three, paragraph E. "The burial of boulders may only be buried." How about just "boulders may only be buried"? Just, um, just strike the burial of and put a capital B on boulders. "The burial of boulders may only be buried." No, it's just "boulders may be buried." Because you're not, you can't bury burial of boulders. It cannot be done.
I think this, this, this could all be just adding a semicolon.
I got it.
A colon?
I think a colon.
I would vote for a colonoscopy.
Now, I want, I want, I want, go ahead, continue, sir.
Well, that's all I have to say about that.
No, you've got the floor for your other comments.
Oh, on page six, other special conditions, A, no part of this application, not part of this application was any design of a project sign. That's not a condition. So what's the objective there?
So there's a grammar thing there.
Well, I, yeah, I should have...
You don't want any special conditions. You wanna move to a different section.
And, and I did notice that, that addition on C 101. Perhaps what we could add there after the semicolon would be...
A semicolon? Oh, yes.
After the word in size, four by six in size, semicolon. Perhaps we could add something saying that, well, I don't know. Does the board wish to see the sign before it's put up? Is that the intent there, that are we...
Yes, it's generally what we do.
Yeah, so they need to return to the board before putting the sign up? Is, is that the intent?
And that would make it a condition, so...
Right.
It...
Which is why you put it under conditions, I guess.
Review of any future project sign to be reviewed by planning board?
Prior to...
Prior to...
Installation or something?
Fabrication and installation.
Yeah, I mean, I would, since we only have one more meeting and we have to approve it at the next meeting, right? I, I would be happy to leave it to your discretion, Howard.
Okay.
Why can't that be just what the requirement of our bylaw about signs? Why is this, you know, if, they're gonna need a permit for the sign anyway, so...
A separate permit?
You have to file, you have to file, you know, you have to meet the zoning requirement of a sign. I don't think four by six is anything special. I think that's...
No, that's just what they noted on the, on the drawing, so...
I think...
Four by six, I believe, is the size of the sign that's already there, isn't it?
For the new life church, the sign that's in...
For the, for the one that says future location.
If it had, if, if, if you're adding to it that it needs to be approved by the board, then it'll get covered at that point. The board only will go by the zoning of what, what it's supposed to be, so that would take care of it, Howard, I think.
You, you wanna strike all of A then?
Not for the...
No, by no means.
No, I, I think, I, I think what I'm hearing is that the applicant has noted that there's a sign now on C 101 and that that sign will be approved upon design prior to fabrication by the planning board.
Am I hearing from, from, from you, Bob, that you'd be okay with Howard signing off on it?
On him recommending at the next board meeting?
The revision to this.
Yeah, to the sign.
To the wording.
To the wording of this.
Well, yeah, but...
In other words, they show, they come in and show him a picture of the sign or at, at some point in the future and he allows it or it comes to us?
No, we, we have to approve it, I think, don't we?
Yeah.
So if they...
Or we would postpone the approval of it and just allow a sign to be placed where it's shown, however, the eventual...
Then they would have to come back with the sign. I mean, if that could be avoided.
Because it might not be designed yet.
Yeah, if it could be avoided.
Well, we could leave it to Howard to give it a final blessing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have a feeling, I mean, they're not gonna put something up there that's too bizarre. I think they have their reputation that, you know, they wanna take care of. This is part of the town. I mean, this isn't a pizzeria. Oh, I'm glad I've entertained you, Tilly. What's up?
You never know.
Just like any other, just like any other project, though, the, the board is...
I don't know why.
The same standards to that, so...
Yeah, go ahead.
Everything gets treated the same.
Why, I mean, if we're gonna take this long on just this one simple one, we're gonna be here all night.
Yeah, that's true.
What, what, what's wrong with what everybody had said where that the sign just needs to be approved by the planning board upon...
Submission.
Submission, prior to fabrication and it's covered.
So we'll approve, we'll approve.
So they're gonna come back when they have designed the sign and they'll, I mean, the project's going ahead.
That's, that's, I wanna make sure that...
Exactly. I don't want this to hold up the project.
I don't think we wanna hold it up because they haven't, they don't have a sign designed yet.
Right, and it would...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's good. The only other, yes, and I'm, so I'm happy with that. The only other thing is expiration of approval, I like it. I just wanted to put on the record, I like it.
And it likes you.
Expiration, where is that written?
Number nine?
Number nine, expiration of approval. I like the way it's worded. Substantial use or construction is commenced.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Tilly?
I, I, I thought it was fine. I, you know...
The, so in terms of the, the rest of the conditions?
The only thing, and I sent, Soward, what I thought about the special permit requirements that he wrote in the beginning.
Special, what's the, do you want, Tilly, I'm sorry?
The very beginning.
Findings of fact?
Yeah, then I think...
Page two.
You did get my email about that, right?
Page two of seven.
Right, that they were taken directly from the local bylaw.
Yeah, and, and the state law. It's, it's pretty, well, my comment when I, when I read this is, this is a template that is used for a guide for all special permits being awarded. You follow this process and I thought it was, it's not sufficient, it's not, um, it's not the best way to write out an approval. It's just repeating word for word what already is there. And when you look at that, you wouldn't know unless you were on the board and attended the meetings what the whole special permit was for. Because all that has been done is cut and paste what special permit is, requirements are necessary. So my comment was to, to, you know, zoning boards get away with this because it's never gonna be appealed. I'm, you know, I'm assuming that. But if a permit was ever going to be appealed, this would not be worthy of going to court about. Because there's no detail, like, for instance, let me, let me start.
So when you say the requested use, you would like it to say the, the requested athletic facility use?
Yes, yes. The, the, and you should, you know, and you should say there, there's gonna be a skate park, a dog park, and a field, and a parking area. You know, it just, that was my objection to, to cut and paste in this. Did I make myself clear?
In other words, the outdoor recreational, active recreational facility is essential and desirable to the public convenience and welfare? Is that what you're saying? In other words, make it more of a statement?
Make it more connected to, that's right.
More tailored?
More tailored to the project.
Typically, the way I think you would do that is you would just, you would reference the type, you would reference it back to the drawings.
Yeah, eventually you would.
So the requested use...
A major outdoor active recreational facility.
Per East Main Street Recreation Project Town of Georgetown, yeah.
Right, and you can go...
You don't have to then list all of the individual components to it.
I would, because those can get lost. I would do that. I would write down exactly what we approved, which was a dog park, ball field, and, and... Because they're planning on doing more things there.
A major outdoor active recreational facility, because that is the use. You're talking about specifics.
That's fine, too. I, I think the specifics where it's hard, Tilly, is that, you know, where do you draw the line on what to include in that definition or not? Do you include saving trees as part of what we approved? Do you include all the different...
No, you don't include all of that. You just, you just wanna say basically, it's a dog park, it's a parking lot. Keep in mind, this is only phase one. This is not the whole...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, because then if somebody brings a frisbee down there, oh, that's not the use, and you could bring the cops down. No, I...
Are we giving it all from the reason that these specific four findings are being brought out? I mean, these, these are part and, but these are copy and paste. These are specifically what is in the bylaw.
What's in the bylaw today.
Exactly, and if you do not, if each of these four is not found to be true by this board, then my understanding is we cannot grant the special permit.
No.
And I understand we need...
No, you're, I will stop, can I stop for a second? And then you can go on. You don't have to meet every one of these. This is not a variance. A variance, you must re, meet the three requirements. A special permit, you don't have to meet every single one of these. You gotta keep that in mind to connect you to, yeah, this should be approved or not approved. But if you don't say why, see, I'm looking for the why. Why do you say that this is a public convenience? Why do you say that it's not gonna overload pub, and in that public water, I mean, it's well, based on the, the letter we got from the water department or the fire department? You could put that in there. Received letters confirming pa, 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 pa.
Can you then, okay, so how would you then want to see number one written?
I would like to see that written, and without, you know, composing word for word. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I, I would propose that we keep the findings of fact of one through four, 'cause that's right from the bylaw, and then add a section below it of determination of fact.
I like that.
And then that gives a better narrative of all these different things that you're talking about.
Yeah.
The, the requested use consisting of such and such.
Well, like in our master plan, the town needs fields.
Yeah, open space and recreation plan.
So you could easily put that in there, that...
Calls for fields.
That, that the board agreed that, from our master plan, that the residents of Georgetown have a need for fields, additional fields.
You can quote...
That would be your public convenience or welfare.
You can quote the open space and recreation plan and our master plan.
And for the second one, I know that they did exhaustive water analysis.
It's not using it. We don't use any water. There is no...
And you're saying, based on the letters...
Oh, I see, I see.
Based on the letters that we received from the water department, the police department, I don't know if we got anything from the electric, but there you, you could have put that. And the requested use will not impair the integrity or character or adjoining districts. And you could add in there, Butters' presence had no objections. The number four, well, that would be three and four. It would be that the Butters...
Certainly can't cause an excess of that particular use since there are no other parks anywhere near it.
Right.
Right.
Is everybody good with Howard sort of summarizing and putting that all into...
A separate category beneath it.
Nice little additional category. Are we good with that?
Well, are we, are we reinventing the wheel here?
I hope not, because I mean, I'm really gonna get critical on the next bit.
No, it's not to, it's not to your concerns of these four.
Keep with your metaphor, we're retreading it.
All right. Okay, 'cause, because...
That was my only...
Setting up another section which you want titled what?
Determination of fact.
Determination of fact, all right. Okay, as long as we're not adding a new section to these conditions that hasn't been part of conditions historically in the past. I don't wanna, that's what I meant by, I don't wanna create a new animal.
No.
No.
Sort of like an explanation of the findings or something.
Right.
Which can't really hurt, right? And then we go right into the...
There's that gonna be put.
Right underneath findings of fact.
Okay, so...
Before further the planning board finds?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is everybody, everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, all right, so, Tilly, anything else on the...
No, that was pretty much all I...
Okay. All right.
Okay, I just wanted, and, and this is where we really sort of need to make some, have some discussion from the board. On page three, it's the, prior to the start of and during construction, A, prior to any work. The inspection, inspecting engineer will make weekly inspections during active periods of construction to confirm that erosion control's been maintained. I just had a general question. Is Dave Varga doing this under the auspices of BSC? Is BSC doing this, hiring Dave Varga? I'm really not clear on who the inspecting engineer is or the company is.
It would be Dave Varga, BSC.
Okay.
Who's still the, the town's inspecting engineer.
Okay.
But I included all that for the board to decide at tonight's meeting if, because it's a town project and there's so many concerns about it, if indeed you wanna make this the exception where you do send out inspecting engineer for occasional inspections of different elements of the park.
So this is the discussion you're talking about?
Yeah, and my concern naturally is, you know, it, it all boils down to the decision, but my concern is that that will be very, very expensive. And I just wanna remind everybody, this is not a subdivision roadway. We're building the park.
Well, I, I took all the language from a subdivision, just so it's the most restrictive and then we can back out.
Absolutely.
I would think Concon would be more...
Yeah, for erosion control, I'm sure Concon...
That's more of an issue for them.
And that, that never has even been something that they send an inspector out for. They always have the...
Well, I thank the agent.
The agent, thank you, the agent go out and do that.
I, I think what, what, what that brought, I had the same question as you did, Harry, about, you know, who, who is the inspecting engineer? And is there an inspecting engineer? But that one section where they're coming in with that two to one slope down onto the abutting property, that's probably the only place, I, I shouldn't say that, but it's, it's one of the places that jumps out at me in terms of erosion control issues. And, um, I have a, I have a different view, I think, than you do in terms of that this is gonna cost the town a lot of money, therefore we shouldn't do it. This project has already cost the town so much more money than it ever should've cost the town if it had been handled and put together in a certain fashion where professionals had carried the ball in putting this together. And I have, I'm concerned that construction will take place on this project and these items will not be addressed. I don't have that confidence, and so I think it's, it's, it's the argument, it's the, it's the argument that we hear all the time, which is, you know, it's the town project, so the town should be saving money and not be doing this. And what I'm saying is that the history of the town doing town projects is that when they do them by themselves, it costs much more money to the town than if they had professionals involved at certain key points. And I, I think, I think the data and I think the facts about all of the, about so many of the projects in the town support that statement. Um, so I tend to, when I saw all of this, my first thing was, well, we're not doing all this. And then I started thinking about it and I thought it was good for discussion, so I tend to come down, I think, on the other side, but that's just me.
I don't think necessarily on the other side. I, I, I wanted to bring it up because I think this is, this is what we have to talk about.
I agree.
I mean, we're, we're determining pretty much if it costs this much or if it costs this much. I, I think it should be somewhere in the middle.
Well, instead of weekly, would you wanna say monthly?
Um, I honestly don't believe the inspection engineer should even be inspecting the erosion control under ours. Because erosion control, there is so many wetlands there, and so much erosion control that's under the auspices of the, the Conservation Commission. I think they're gonna be out there doing their inspections and Steve will be there all the while.
How, so how do we take, how do we address the erosion, uh, on the site that's, has, that's not jurisdiction of Concom? Potential erosion there.
Well, all of it, none of it is under the auspices control because it's a, it's a, it's a planning board, um, project. I mean, um, it's a special permit.
It's all under there.
Oh, I, I disagree with it. I think we have shared jurisdiction.
How does that bylaw read? How does that bylaw read, the erosion control bylaw?
I, I'm, I'm not referring to erosion control bylaw. What I'm referring to will be their order of conditions.
Are they done? I don't even know if they're complete.
My understanding is Thursday night, tomorrow night, tomorrow night, they, uh, they have another meeting.
See, and I, I think they're, I think all they can do.
You have a specific point though, a specific location where you're concerned?
Yeah, Rob has a good point.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we call that out?
Yeah, absolutely.
And?
Absolutely.
Maybe that would be the.
I, I think, um, I mean, the other, the other.
You're talking about what, two? One or two?
The, the main, the, the main concern is, um.
The next sheet probably, right?
Yeah, no, um.
You up here?
I think if you go back, Howard.
The border between the company, the UFP.
Yeah, that's right on the line.
This, this, this is all getting, I think it's, this is all the two to one slope.
Oh, this, this, this is better one.
And it's just pitching off two to one in that direction. So this is all being redone and just seeded. And I'm not clear on what the erosion control measures are for that. I'm not clear on who's maintaining that, who's responsible for maintaining it. Um, it's, it's a seed. Well, that's a, I wanna make sure.
Isn't the better shot that shows it? It shows it. There's another, there's another plan.
It's a grading, it's a grading plan.
Yeah, it's probably.
But the other, the other two is when they're doing the construction here, I wanna make sure that, you know, that this isn't, uh, uh, the silt isn't coming out on the street in a rainstorm and that that part is also.
Isn't that part of the, uh, the apron?
Well, it normally is if it's, if it's been designed properly, if they have an anti-tracking device, so. That, but I.
Detail sheet five?
I haven't looked at that.
Detail sheet five? Five to seven? We're getting there.
But, but, so they, it may be on the detail sheet, and it probably is, but someone needs to, someone needs to, uh, be on top of it. And that's, that's the inspecting engineer.
Absolutely this. Yeah, it's there somewhere.
What's that?
That's a section that wouldn't be it.
I, what's that?
Right there. So they're showing, I, I can't read it, but see the guy erosion control there, and this, this guy over here?
Yep, that guy right there.
Can, can you also push it this way, so that you can see that detail over here, this detail, so, thanks?
Yeah, there you go.
Construction entrance. So that's the anti-tracking device and, um.
Entry, sure.
Non-tractor shall maintain erosion control berm in a functional condition at all times and until inspected.
So. So, okay, so they do have it, so they do have it, which is great.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that, that these things are being inspected by somebody and, and that they're, they're, they're addressed so that we know that the drawings are being enforced.
Really, areas beyond Concom jurisdiction should be our responsibility to see to it that it's inspected properly.
Yeah, absolutely.
You could maybe change this, Rob, so it says, during, ins, ins, um, inspecting engineers, and I'll come up with better language, uh, that during inspecting engineer inspections, um, or during inspections, routine inspections, inspecting engineer shall confirm erosion control is being maintained or something like that.
Yeah.
So in his monthly report, it might be allied item saying, I observed all the erosion controls properly maintained or something.
Um, the challenge with erosion though is unfortunately you need that to be once a week. Um, and it doesn't take much, I mean, it's.
Rain event or something to.
I mean, it's like a fifteen, you're right, it's like a, it's like a, it's a real quick visit, so the charge to the town should not be a lot of money for him to, to go out there and just take a look and.
Well, when you have to ride from Boston to.
Is that where he's coming from?
Yeah.
Oh, he comes from Georgetown.
Comes from Georgetown, but sometimes charges come.
The thing, the thing that, that doesn't win me though.
We, we didn't wanna talk about that.
In the, in the past, is that we, to look at what it costs is really not fair because we don't look at costs for any other applicant. So the thing is, is that I understand it, nobody likes to pay and it all comes out of our taxes. But to me, because there are issues there, you've got a very close abutting business there, to save a hassle later on, let's do it right. Let's have an inspector there beyond the conservation board to look at it. I, I just have that feeling that, let's not mess it up. It's the beginning. There's several phases to this project. How many more acres are left? How many more acres are left to this land that?
I think that's it.
No, they gotta do further back.
Yeah, but that's not relevant to this.
No, but that's what I'm saying, it's the beginning and, and.
Oh, you mean the rest of the greenway?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, tho- those lands aren't even purchased yet.
Yeah, I mean, this is gonna be the beginning, the start of a, of a nice project, and, and we just don't wanna mess it up. I, that's my feeling.
I think we should be responsible for the erosion control of areas of non-concern. I mean, that Concom is not already, like, all the way, as you come in from the road, all the way back to a little bit beyond, like you said, where that slope is.
And I, and I, I, I think because there was so much discussion about this in the past, I mean, there was all the, 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 the efficacy of, of, um, porous pavement working, not working, uh, so I think the erosion control is, is, is an important item on this particular project.
Well, this is good. This is the discussion I, I, I wanted to bring up. I mean, if the board feels that it's weekly, I think it could be less than weekly. Uh, not as frequently as weekly. You, we disagree? I, I don't know. Let's throw it out there.
Rob doesn't get the vote.
I, I, I'm not a voting member.
As needed, can you put as needed maybe?
Not a voting member.
As needed, um.
Would that be more open?
I mean, let's face it, we all drive by.
Well, if, if you wanna say as needed, um, that would, that would work for me.
Mm-hmm.
That would tell the inspecting engineer that they need to be on their toes and when it's raining, they gotta go check it out.
Yeah, and if there's nothing going on there for three months, there's no need to go out there weekly.
They don't need to check it out.
Right.
Right.
And that's my only thing. Uh, this sort of says, he's out there every week, needed or not, and.
We, I mean, we, and we may.
I've seen that before. I think we remember that from, from the past. I remember subdivisions getting, uh, inspected in January.
Well, don't you remember the, there.
Okay.
I haven't forgotten the mess on River Road Ave.
Okay.
Where there was erosion going all the way down to West Main Street.
Yeah, that was a horrendous rainy day.
So we don't want that to happen again.
That'll happen again.
So how it can, so on A, it sounds like the board's looking for that to be modified at, on an as-needed basis for erosion control?
Yeah.
Okay, is that, did I speak as needed?
I think that's great.
Okay.
That was what I was going for.
You're still on.
The next one's B.
Yeah.
The, the soil samples, um, and the, the sieve inspections, um, are we, is, is the roadway going to be really called a roadway or is it a driveway? And I think that's maybe where we are, and I saw some details.
Well, the town will be taking over the maintenance and, and plowing of, of this.
This is not gonna be plowed.
Well, uh, the apron up to the, the, the gate.
Oh, oh.
So I was thinking that this would have to do with all the road, roadway subgrids.
Well, do they, let me ask you this. Do, do, you're probably more familiar with the drawings now than I am. Do they call out on their drawings, uh, these specs? Do they, does, does, does Gale?
Yeah.
Call out what kind of compaction they're looking for and, um, and, uh, what standards they're, they're, um, looking for for? Cause if they do, then, 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 then that's one, and then two is, do you wanna be inspecting that independently? And on that one, I would be completely comfortable with, I mean.
This is also pervious too, so I thought it was a little bit more important than as if it was just gonna be.
I, I, I agree, actually, I agree. If we're cornered, okay, do they give anything other than these details? Do they, do they have any specs anywhere?
Yeah, I haven't received a spec book.
Okay, so.
So there isn't any performance numbers they need to meet.
So they don't, they haven't provided, um, that information on the drawings.
Well, this, and maybe, maybe what I should, um, what, what I should distinguish here is the difference between the paved surface, which the town definitely owns, the town's definitely maintaining, and plowing. And the non-paved driveway roadway surface, you're calling it a roadway, I prefer to call it a driveway.
So I, before roadway, I can add in pervious roadway.
Paved. Because it's a paved driveway, right?
Right.
The, the apron.
Soil samples were all paved roadway.
And we might even be able to call it a station. Up to, from, to, if you wanna get kind of specific.
I think it's clear, here, explicit.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm cool with stations.
If, if, if you, if you, if your station lines up with the end of the porous pavement, then it works. If, if your stationing doesn't line up with that, then it's easier to say where, where the material lines.
Station five plus eight-five is the limit of, uh, the, the pavement.
Well, there you go.
So there you go for that.
Alright, are we good there?
So, so this discussion, which is a great discussion, um, so there's a drawing there that doesn't talk about any, um, compaction requirements, doesn't talk about, um, any, uh, sieve analysis and to, to meet the three-quarter inch crushed. So what is the board feeling about that? There's a lot of room, there's a lot of gray in there. There's, there's nothing requiring the contractor. If I'm the contractor and I get this drawing, I'm gonna bid, competitive bid, the lowest number I can, and I'm gonna look at those places that are loosey-goosey and come in with the least amount.
Sure, that's, that's why I wanted to discuss this. This, this part right here.
Yeah.
From Main Street to five, five eighty-five. That point, that should be subdivision roadway standards, as far as pavement, as far as subgrade, as far as compaction standards, ninety-five percent theoretical density, all of that.
I would say.
And we can do that by just putting in a little blurb that says, as per subdivision roadway standard. But for the rest of it, that's supposed to be a permeable surface. And, um, this kind of, the, the subdivision roadway standard that we have doesn't lend itself well like that.
Oh, no.
To its permeability.
No, no.
As a matter of fact, you'd probably wanna keep it, you know, pretty much virgin for probably.
I'm glad I'm hearing that from you, Harry, because for two, what was it, a year and a half, I've been hearing, this is not a subdivision road.
No, no, but what, what you have there still, you have a driveway that the town has to take care of.
Yeah.
And is, is responsible for, uh, keeping open for the church. So in that respect, even though I'm still calling it a driveway,
Yeah.
it should have roadway construction, um, standard.
Right.
It, it, it should, um, I will, except that the, and I, I agree with you conceptually, Harry, that that would be a good one to turn to, to, to those standards for the, for the subdivision road design. Um, but, uh, there, they are, um, they would be excessive, uh, in terms of, um, right off the top of my head, the, the layer thickness that they require for the, for the subdivision road does not have to be the same thickness for these. Um, and so if we go by the subdivision standard, and this is kinda bringing me back to asking this fundamental question that, I, I just guess I assumed that the drawings kind of had this stuff spelled out.
Hmm.
But I, I, I'm, I'm surprised that they don't in terms of what we've been talking about, so.
Well, this is why I've been. I wasn't concerned to, to the technical review engineer either, so.
It wasn't. Um, anyway, so here's where we are today, uh, so I.
So you'll still require the soil samples for any of the subgrade and, uh, materials for areas of the, uh, the pervious pavement roadway.
Impervious.
From state, from East Main Street to the station.
Impervious, impervious.
Paved is a safer thing, is that?
Paved.
Imperv, yeah, the, the paved roadway, yeah. Inch and a half a binder, inch and a half a top?
Whatever's on the, the drawing, right?
If, if, if you think, uh, the subdivision roadway standards are too onerous?
I, I.
I, I.
It, it, we, I, we, as a board, we shouldn't be the ones, you know, saying, you know, one and a half inch, one and a half inch.
Sure we should, special permit.
No, no, no.
In my opinion, we should be.
No, we don't have that expertise, baloney. Now, if you, if you wanna ask, if you wanna ask a civil engineer who's professionally trained in determining the thickness requirements for a road, then yeah, they, they have it, um, but, uh, that's not a call.
Well, perhaps the default would be what we, the standard that we ask every contractor to build, uh, our streets to.
Well, that, 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 that's a safe way out.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a safe way.
It's gonna function in that first five hundred feet as a street.
Yeah.
It has to, it has to work well, it has to have durability.
It's a safe way out that, that the, the.
Peter Dirk is gonna be plowing it.
Catch twenty-two is that I think it's gonna cost.
They're showing it as, as, uh, a three-inch depth.
Three-inch depth?
Yeah, so here's the, here's the profile right here.
That's the gravel, that's the.
So if, if you, if, if.
That's the pervious.
If you reference the subdivision standards, they may be in conflict with that detail.
One and a half, two and a half.
Oh, there you go, you're alright.
One and a half, two and a half.
Two and a half, yeah, that's, that's heavy duty. Oh, okay, they're, they're going heavy duty, never mind.
I, I.
That's great.
I mean, what you're looking for, you're, you're looking, you're looking, you're looking for confirmation of the material, and that's done through, you know, two or three tests, and you're looking for confirmation of the compaction. And they've got the details, and so maybe what you do is you reference the subdivision standards where they talk about that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, where they'll talk about, you know, you sieve per ASTM one, three, five, six, or whatever the heck the number is for that test. So ma- maybe you do that.
Yeah, I think that's too confusing.
What?
To reference anything with the subdivision specs without referencing everything.
Okay, eh, could be.
I'd just leave it alone. It spells it out reasonably well here.
Well, that, that doesn't, it doesn't give any indication.
Trouble.
That's the pro, that's the thing. It's not telling you just on the compaction issue, is it ninety percent, ninety-five percent, ninety-eight percent? And so what happens there is the contractor now, who's. And so what happens there is the contractor now, who's bidding this, eh, he, he can compact it however he wants, and he can come in therefore with a lower price. So, this would just be basic construction documents.
I don't think we really have to worry about that, if you read K.
K.
Uh, inspection engineer shall check gravel finish grade, compaction per subdivision regulations, prior to placement of binder course, compaction testing mandatory roadbeds, before binder gravel should be contacted to ninety-five percent theoretical density.
There you go.
You hit anything.
There you go.
Hit, hit anything, if you can achieve ninety-five.
There you go.
You've got a really good.
We don't even know what's in it.
The inspecting engineer shall check gravel finish, alright.
Great.
Good catch, so you could get rid of B? What do you need B for?
I don't think we do.
That's inspecting it.
Cause that's all about the inspecting of this, uh, what, what K is saying is covered.
I think we could scrub it, right?
I think so.
Scrub B?
Yeah.
I think so.
I'm good with it, okay.
I'm good with that. Howard, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Can I bring everyone's attention to G?
Are you going past C?
Um, yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, uh, inspecting engineer shall perform daily site visits during active installation of utilities, water, sewage, drainage. We, we don't have water, we don't have sewer. Uh, there, there, there are no drainage pipes or structures.
You don't, oh, that's right, you're gonna pump from the, from the pond?
Yeah, I believe that, that's their, their intent, yeah.
All of it.
Yeah, and the only, the only utilities that I know of would be electric, it'll be coming in. And, uh, if they're gonna run, what is it, twelve, fifteen hundred feet of pipe?
You're not gonna have a water fountain for kids to drink? No?
I'm not, uh, this is parking rec's design, I, I don't, I don't know, bring water bottles. I, I, I don't think you're gonna run fifteen hundred foot of, uh, of, uh, electrical conduit in one day.
We've got a fire hydrant.
I agree, I agree.
It's gonna be a while, and I mean, they close the trench, like, they, they block the trench off the way they have to as per regs, and they call them before they bury. Get them in there, does it look okay to you, Dave?
Yeah.
He says it looks okay, they start to bury.
So where is it saying, uh, in all of these, that, uh, that's the utility that'll get inspected like that? Does it say that anywhere?
Perhaps we can just modify it to say the inspection engineer shall perform, uh, visits.
As, as.
As needed for the installation of utilities.
Good.
And then the water, sewer, drainage.
Suburbs gone.
Structures, all that goes away, right?
Yeah, I agree.
You good with that, Howard?
Yeah.
Give you any suggestions of that?
Alright.
Yeah.
Next.
Are we requiring monuments in, the next one in I? Utility placement shall not conflict with installation of lot boundary monuments, that, that's definitely taken right out of a subdivision.
Right.
Are, I, I, I wasn't under the impression, maybe I missed it, are we having the parking rec put boundaries?
I don't think so.
I don't recall any monuments.
So delete I.
Oh, uh, should we pull I right out?
Yeah.
Yep.
Kill it, kill I.
Harry, you, you're, that's your thing, boundaries. No boundaries here?
I don't, I don't think that, um.
They're not really creating any new laws.
I, I, I don't think.
You know, one of my.
United Foam wants to know where the boundary is.
Oh.
The inspect, um, what is it, excuse me, there's J. Um, inspecting engineer shall check road subbase prior to placement, are you good with that one?
Can you say again, please?
Uh, this is J.
Yeah.
Or what is J now?
Yeah.
Um, that's back to what you're talking about, the inspection, right?
Yeah.
And K is K. Right?
Another question about K is, is how do you determine that it's been compacted to ninety-five percent of theoretical?
It's a test, they go out with this, they go out with this little thing and go. And it gives readings.
Cool.
You jump up and down on that. Keep chatter.
Feels pretty firm. I'd say that's all about, oh, ninety-five. Run the twenty-pound vibratory roller over it about ten times, and when it stops walking to the side, you know you're there.
So do you wanna maintain just the, uh, the, the statement, uh, as needed, instead of stating daily site visits or just say, site visits as needed?
Yep.
During gravel placement and compaction with the pervious pavement sidewalk?
You're on, you're all, already on L.
Yes.
I like you, I like the way you're thinking there.
Okay, so just let me back up, so you're deleting J, is that what I'm hearing?
Are we deleting it completely?
What do you, what's happened to J, I'm not clear.
No, J just stays, doesn't it?
Okay. I didn't mean to, I, I just wasn't clear.
No, I, I, I thought it was staying.
Okay, sorry, alright.
I'm good with it staying.
Good.
But, uh, to, to bring up what Howard was saying, L, we're, we're killing daily site bil- visits and we're putting in, um, as, as, as needed?
Yeah. I think so.
Don't get me wrong, I want Dave to go out there, I don't want him to live there.
Well, he'll, it'll be up to the board to.
You know what, Dave, Dave has been doing it for a while, and I think he's been doing a great job. And I think he's, oh, I think he's just gonna intuitively know when he needs to be out there. I think, he's gonna see it, the job unfolds before your eyes, and he knows the critical times he needs to be there. Continuous checking of pavement, I've always been for that. I think.
Where, where?
I am, I'm sorry, am, I've always been for continuous checking of pavement, when they pay.
But we're not gonna have a sidewalk, right?
You, you are, you do have a sidewalk, but just for a woman.
Pervious, and all, all the more reason why you should be there.
Where's the sidewalk? Oh, the one that's further back?
Not a concrete sidewalk, but a, but a gravel sidewalk.
Gravel sidewalk, okay.
Pervious.
Maybe you take pavement off, they're not paving any further.
Are we leaving the mixed spec to, to Peter Durkey in N? Oh, we just go with mass highway standards.
Let's give Peter something to do.
Alright.
So O can be removed, right, cause it's referring to monuments?
That would be great, might as well pull it, right?
And P is dupa, uh, is a duplication, we've already touched upon that.
Pulling P.
Okay, um, one second, Harry.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so what's going on with N?
Looks good to me, like, the only thing I'm, uh, my only concern is mixed spec is subject to approval.
Highway survey approval, period, right?
But why is it, is, isn't?
Yeah, I, I don't know why Pete's getting dragged into it.
Yeah, I, I would.
I think he's pretty busy guy to begin with.
I, I would say if they're just meeting those regs, it's all set, and then it's up to the inspecting engineer to just verify that.
Yeah, MHD standards seem to work for me.
Correct the last line.
Yeah, you would delete that. Okay, Q?
Q works fine.
Okay, everybody all set with that, Ryan?
Howard's great, but we're on, right?
Yep.
He always provides that along with his billing, so.
And, um, gee, that's, that's kinda new, but I like it, where'd you get that one? Come up with that one? Pull that one for us, yeah.
I wrote it.
Okay, so we're, uh, just to be on the same page, so S is all set? Okay?
I'm fine, yeah, that's, that's how it always has been.
And T is all set? Okay, you wanna get that subdivision out of there, though?
Oh, yes, on all subdivisions, on, on the project while under construction, right, that first line?
Yeah.
Of T.
Yeah, just the activity on.
Monthly summary of.
This project on construction. Something, monthly summary. So thi- this, so isn't T about all the projects that this guy is responsible for in the town?
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, where the, where, where did this sort of come from, this is, this is how.
So shouldn't, I mean, this is ju, this is a condition for just this project? And so it's.
Is this template stuff?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's applicable.
Oh, you think it's not applicable?
Well, I, I think it's, uh, it, it may be a wordy way of saying it's a monthly report. And it's what his observation.
Project.
Of, of this project, every, every project he's inspecting, he does a, um, a, a field report.
Yeah.
And then a monthly report.
Yep.
Um, and then along with that, eh, the ones I've seen, he usually gives a statement about what he anticipates is coming up in the next month.
Just, just get rid of on all subdivisions under.
Right, right.
Okay.
I, I just struck out on all subdivisions under construction, just a monthly summary of activity.
Perfect, okay. What is, uh, at the top of page five, it says one eighty-six rear east Main Street?
That's just part of the header.
Okay, alright, alright.
So if a page ever gets loose, you.
Got it. Rear east Main Street.
Um, I'm good with four stockpiling materials, five construction operations, um, six? Does a park achieve a certificate of occupancy?
The wildlife aren't allowed in there until they get their occupancy.
Oh, you've got a bird's nest out there.
Squirrel, oh.
Right.
And I know it's part of the template.
Right, but maybe sign off by the building inspector or, or someone.
When does he sign off?
That the project's been basically wide.
Be used.
Yeah, it could be used.
Open to the public.
That it's ready.
It's a special permit, somebody has to.
Well, they're gonna file for a permit to construct, and there's gonna be something to close that out, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't, no, I, 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 I'm asking the question, I'm not being.
That, that's what I wanted.
I simply don't know.
It's a good question, I mean.
I mean, there's no building.
I, I, I think it, I think it does.
The issue, I think, really is, what's the criteria for opening the gates and letting the folks in?
Yeah.
There must be a sign, keep out during construction, I would think.
But again, there's gotta be a criteria for taking that sign down.
Yeah.
And saying wide open, and I think that's the equivalent of a certificate of occupancy.
I, I, I think, you know, prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy is, you know, I don't know if you wanna change certificate of.
I'll just leave it, it's understood.
It, it is understood, I agree.
I mean.
So then just leave it.
Yeah.
Is, but I do, I agree, I think it's a good discussion, and it is important that someone signs off that this park is safe and ready to open.
Sure. Um.
I would think that would be the building inspector.
We're gonna leave it, do we wanna, um.
Maybe I can put in parentheses.
Do we wanna take out the, the words building and lighting?
There is no lighting, right?
Right, there's no building, there's no lighting.
No, there, there isn't any lighting, but there's utilities for future lighting, right?
There is.
And there's no signs.
Well.
Heaven's mustn't really actually.
There's gonna be one sign.
Landscaping.
Building, even lighting, maybe?
Why can't you get rid of all of those examples and just the project subs, uh, complies substantially with the plans referenced?
There you go.
Uh, so, uh, engineer of the project stating. Site layout substantially comply?
Yeah, so, s- site, I would say site development substantially complies with the plans referenced, so you're calling it on then?
Um, are we gonna conduct fire flow tests?
Well, there, there was a question, because there is, um. There's a dry hydrant located out here. Water pump, electrical panels, and pump controls for field irrigation.
Oh, yeah, that's.
The, the, the dry hydrant that's being put in here for, for the.
Probably that would come from the pond, right?
Yeah. So is there anything that the fire department needs to go out there for, for testing?
They might wanna test the pumps.
Sure.
Works for me. And what is, uh, the planning staff, planning board, or technical review agent shall review the site?
Yeah.
What is that? Strike C?
Strike it.
And do we really need ASBILts?
You might want ASBILts for the roadway, as it comes from East Main Street up to the hill to the gate.
The thing about the ASBILts that are helpful too is it helps the building inspector hang his hat on something versus just looking.
Okay.
So do you want ASBILts for all of the site, you, you, you don't want ASBILts for the playground, right?
Bring ASBILts as far as the, um, what was it, Station five plus eighty-five?
Right.
Up to there? That would work.
Or do you want ASBILts for what you want?
The AS, the ASBILts, the ASBILts not that hard to get in terms of location, um, with the surveying guys, you know, they can get that in, in half a day. So I wouldn't, I don't know, it's not our jurisdiction, but I'd like to think that these things are gonna get located out there where they're supposed to be. And they don't get placed somewhere, uh, in violation of some setback or some agreement, um, but that's not our jurisdiction, Conservation Commission, so.
I, I. I mean, our concern might be the roadway, the sidewalk, and the parking, and the fields, and the dog pen and stuff is like.
And I think ASBILT plans for this project, eh, going on what you're saying, it's, there's not a lot of structures, it's, it, of concern, and it's just going out there and saying, here's the skate park. It was built where it was meant to be, or it's a little bit shifted, is it important to know?
Cool. Works for me.
Because, eh, again, I don't think it's gonna be that much work to go out and just.
I receive ASBILts, you need for acceptance.
The only concern I would have would be safety, that if, if, for instance, in the ball field, if, uh, the, um, the backstop is, um.
Built too close to the.
Yeah, or it's some, some other issue, you know, some overhang, and a ball can come up and come back down. I know those kinds of things have changed over the years, and I'm not all that familiar with them, having had all daughters, you know? I don't know what the issues are in, in, not mine, I don't know what the issues are in a, in a skate park, but I'm sure that there are.
Right.
Sa- some safety issues, who would have jurisdiction in that? Building inspector? That, just, just say maybe that these will be built in accordance with current safety standards.
Right, that's why I put it, it said this, this site must comply with applicable state, fire, and building code, and building code's just not structured.
If they don't build those backstops in the right place, they're gonna have all GAA, and they're gonna have everybody else on their back.
No, you're absolutely right, if, if the benches are uncomfortable.
Part of, part of this too is, um, uh, what defines, um, an ASBILT. And it would seem that, just picking up on what I think I hear everybody saying, is that if, if the site as a whole, that if the layout is generally confirmed by an ASBILT. So that would be just layout, that would just be they're picking up corners of the field and things like that. But then, a true ASBILT to confirm the grades and the entrance conditions up to that station point you're talking about. So the ASBILT would be more involved for that portion of work.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And the only third one that I'm thinking of is that any place where ADA compliance issues, uh, involve grading, like, there's a lot of four and a half percent stuff around. And I'm not sure if those are intend, wherever they're intending to be an ADA walk, they, they would wanna comply with that, and sometimes, you know, that can get built not right, so that would be the third component.
Okay.
ADA compliant grading, where it's called for in the drawings as being ADA, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Again, that was only, do we need ASBILts if we're not gonna accept something? I, I always think of ASBILts as something that are done so that the town can accept officially like a roadway.
Yep.
But if we want ASBILts, and the board wants ASBILts.
Um, okay, so, uh. Um, okay, so, uh, Harry, you kinda went over all of that, which is great.
Yeah, that's, that's me, I'm done.
That was, that was great, I, I guess I'm just gonna go to the other special conditions, and I just had a bunch of questions. Um, again, I, I'm not of, so this is, uh, page six of seven, the other special conditions. Um. Uh, you already talked about A, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that one's all set, um. When, when they come back with that sign, I don't know if the sign has been located on town property or church property or state highway property, um.
Looks like it's directly across the driveway from where the other one is.
Yeah, so it, it just, when I looked at that, I couldn't tell.
Right.
So we just wanna make sure that it's on the property, that it's supposed to be whatever property that is.
Right, and if it's on church property, that they have a.
They need to get some agreement.
Approval of it.
Yeah, and it can't be on the state property.
No, no.
So, and I, I just couldn't tell from that drawing, it, it actually looked like it was on state property, but that's, I wasn't sure.
Yep.
So that condition, I guess, needs to just make clear that in addition to the sign, its placement or its location is also part of the approval, that it's.
Good point.
Whatever problem, um, B applicant established, okay, B's all set, C applicant to install plant material, I'm not gonna get into that one, um. Applicant to, that one's all set, E's all set, um. Applicant to provide and install chain link fence six feet in height as per plan, um, item F. One of the, on one fence detail note, they call it as infilled or, um, it's, it's chain link with something, what, what was the wording that I saw?
Vinyl?
Yeah, vinyl, vinyl slats, um, on another note, they call it just chain link fence, which I don't know if the drawings, if they mean it to be, they're gonna have two types of fences out there. One a chain link fence and one a chain link fence that have, have these slat.
Right, the screening on it.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they were talking, what, what their intent was there, um. Let's see it somewhere. So on C one oh four, Howard. There's one note that says six foot CLF with screening.
Right.
And I'm assuming that's the one that has the, those lats in it?
Yeah, that's what I.
Okay.
Was assuming.
And then the other chain link fence that is sitting on top of the wall is called out as just a chain link.
On C one oh four as well? So here's one, the six foot with screening.
Right, and that's the fence that's going all along that two to one slope, but there's a wall there, right there, yep. And there's a fence called out on that with a. I read it's module block, oh, so on C one oh one, there it is. If you go to C one oh one, that wall, the fence is called out as a module block retaining wall with six foot chain link fence.
There's a detail for that.
According to top.
On the detail sheet.
So, so are they having two different types of?
Uh, check the detail.
Chain link.
Check, you have to check the, the detail sheets at the end there.
I mean, I, I'm thinking they wanted the same chain link and it's just an omission by mistake.
They're showing how, how the posts are in, I, I don't know if they specified the, um, I wanna say it's one of the last ones, oh. Block wall's coming up there somewhere. Chain link fence detail.
Okay.
Gate connection. Swing gate.
Okay, so those are, those are, those are for the baseball field, there it is.
Yep.
Black vinyl coated chain link fence, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Black vinyl coated, where's, where's, where's the?
Vinyl coated chain link fabric.
Doesn't say anything in it about, uh.
Doesn't say anything about the infill.
Yeah.
What do you mean by infill?
Well, I thought what they were talking about, you know those woven slats that people put inside, I thought that's what they said they were going to do there.
Woven.
Oh, right, okay.
Okay.
Um.
I think only up by the UFP building.
Do, do you wanna just write in here, um, approval of infill material, uh, by planning board?
Trying to think how to do it so we, so they.
I don't recall if they ever said it, if it was gonna be black or brown or green.
Would, would it be possible to see those, um, the notes on the left there?
They didn't.
Nope.
Is that fuzzy or is it just made?
It's fuzzy.
Fuzzy. Fabric, the fabric refers to the actual chain link weave.
Black chain link fence, fabric shall be knuckled top and bottom.
So black is a great color for the regular chain link to fade away, um.
All chain link fabric, F-A-B-R-I-C-K, shall be installed in the field.
So just, yeah, I guess color to be approved by, uh, uh, we just don't, we just don't want some of the bright colors that people can use, and I'm sure they're not gonna.
Right.
Earth color, but.
You know, they, I think they mentioned dark green and black.
Black PVC.
Yeah.
Second note.
Yeah.
And they use, uh, is, is F-A-B-R-I-C-K of Brandon?
Where are you?
Eight and six.
All chain link fabric.
Is that fabric of, of, is that a specific?
Spelling.
No, that's just a buble?
A type of, oh, okay.
Type of. Um.
Pretty cool name for the slats, though, making slats.
So. So how are they? So if everyone's alright.
Color of slats to be approved by planning board, they can just submit.
Good, good, um, app, uh, on G applicant to salvage, stockpile, it was just a gramm- grammatical thing, I think it was confusing, where it says applicant to salvage, stockpile and reconstruct on site in the existing stone wall. If you just delete and reconstruct, so it reads applicant to salvage, stockpile, on site, any existing stone wall material needed to be moved and then put in and reused in order to construct the project.
Mm-hmm.
Did that, you got, you want me to do that again?
Yeah.
Kind of the same time.
Um, well, applicant to salvage, stockpile, on site, any existing stone wall material.
Sounds like we're building it back in place.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And it's not being put back in place, it's being relocated.
In a big pile.
Until it's used.
By.
Along the, along the, um.
Well, you could stop at material in a sense.
I mean, i- is it explicit that it's, that they are going to rebuild a stone wall someplace?
Yeah.
They're gonna use them all along the.
Yeah, they were gonna do that.
I understand.
Alright, as, as long as it's explicit in the plans.
Is, did they call it out on the plan?
Taking, taking reconstruct away.
Is that stone?
Sounds to me like.
Uh, I don't think they did because they didn't know how much quantity they, they, they were gonna have.
Well, why don't we just put a period after material and, and remove the rest of it?
Because we want them to, to rebuild stone walls somewhere on the site, I thought that was a specific.
Not reconstruct on site.
We have thirteen there?
Yeah.
Is it thirteen hour or ten?
Right here, isn't it, I think that's the assumed.
What's that say? Stone wall? Relocated stone wall.
Relocated stone wall.
Alright.
Right.
So that's the term they used, which is fine. So applicant to salvage, stockpile.
That was the slate, wasn't it, that they talked about, blue, blue slate?
And.
I thought that was coming from.
On site, so stockpile, any existing stone wall mater, any on site, any existing stone wall material needed.
To be moved and rebuilt, you know.
If, there's a wall in there.
To be, yeah, rebuilt, that's fine.
Alright.
Rebuilt per drawing.
Or we could say in order to relocate the stone wall, 'cause construct the project could be anything. This second base is gonna be one of those stones.
Okay, I'll, I'll wordsmith it.
Okay.
And I believe this was a specific request of the board.
Yeah.
That, um. Parking not be allowed, uh, on, on this.
Yeah.
Roadway come, going up to here, that you didn't want people to not park over there and instead try to park in these locations.
Then, I don't know if these, there seemed to be a number of items that, that, that you all had talked about and agreed on that I don't see specifically being mentioned, and I have five of them. And they may be what you were talking about doing by creating this new section. Um, you know, you, you all talked about having a new section after findings of the fact.
Mm-hmm.
And it may be, what I'm asking here is that section, so if it is, you know, just say so, but, um. There, there's, there's no increase to the stormwater offsite, and that was found to be one of the facts, if I'm not mistaken, and that was really important.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
That can be included in, um, towards, um, wha- what did we call it?
Exactly.
Terminations?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah, that's exactly, yeah, yep. Um, this is a question, uh, who's going to be responsible for maintenance of the porous pavement? Um, I thought I remember, um, Jim saying they would.
Park and rec.
Park and rec, right, well, so it should say that. 'Cause that's gonna become an issue down the road, I guarantee it, but that should be one of the findings, I think.
Should that be a finding or a condition?
That should be a condition, that should be a condition, correct. It doesn't say, and this should be a condition too, who's responsible for maintaining the planting and the seeding. And Park and Rec said that they were gonna be, so that should be a condition, 'cause when the seeding goes in, someone's gonna have to water it, someone's gonna have to take care of it until it gets established. And the opening and closing of the gate, I thought was going to be up to the Park and Rec. Who, was, was, did, would you, I thought I remembered the Park and Rec was gonna go there each day to open it and close it. But they were gonna put their own hours, they were gonna determine what it was, 'cause someone's got to, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be a condition.
Alright.
That they're, that Park and Rec's responsible.
Should we add that on to, um, E?
You could.
Under, other special conditions?
Sure.
Because that refers to the sign noting the hours of operation.
Sure.
At the proposed gate.
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's fine too.
Do you even have an answer for it?
Yeah. Okay.
Excite.
That was, uh, that was it.
That was it.
Thank you for all the comments.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I'll tell it, it was a good job.
So, um.
Rubbish rich decision.
The next item on the, uh, new business, um. To do spreadsheet for initial discussion. Um. Is Howard's handling this stuff out, um, so we have, you know, town meeting that comes up in May. And annual town meeting, and we have, uh, two meetings in January, two meetings in February, and two meetings, I think, in March. So we have six meetings.
Right.
To resolve this list.
The, the warrant, the, the warrant opens, uh, the fifth of January and closes on the sixteenth of February. But as long as we have the substantial amount of what we're gonna be proposing, done by the time the warrant closes, we're fine.
When does the warrant close again, please?
Uh, the warrant closes on February sixteenth, but we still have a few weeks after that. So we, we really just have, uh, six meetings, January, February, and March.
So, yeah.
With everything really should be done by March eleventh, is when you should close public hearings on any of the amendments and bill.
Okay, alright. So, um, I, I'm, I'm gonna be looking at this pretty soon, but, uh. So we had, what I heard from the board was solar, um, affordable housing and stormwater. And then whether or not we can complete all those in time and any others or less than that or whatever, but that was my two cents, so, um.
Don't we currently have, um, solar? I- i- is the.
Solar was nearly fully baked.
Is the public, isn't the public hearing open?
No, it's closed.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We, and, and just to keep it clean, we really ought to re-notice, but, but effort made is not lost.
Oh, no.
It definitely needs to be culled down some more.
Point nine, just not good, I think.
But that's certainly, I'd say, almost eh, three quarters done, uh, and then the use schedule and the definitions, that's done. Um, and then there, as, as Rob mentioned, there's stormwater is a big issue, and just to add, uh, I spoke with, uh, by email with the task force. And they're still in the process of vetting their accessory apartment by law, that they had been to the board once before, uh, through zoning, and they expect to have something for us to look at, uh, hopefully by the end of December. So there's a lot of things to take on.
Well. I would love to look at the storm drain calculations and look at the Concom numbers for revising the, the, uh, the subdivision regs, but I, again, I, I'm, I'm allowed to do that without complete conjunction with the CONCOM doing it at the same time in their regs.
In, in the stormwater is, is a little bit tricky because it's in the bylaws as well as the subdivision regs.
Absolutely.
You don't have to do town meeting for the subdivision regs, that, that's more of something with the board.
Right.
But the bylaws you definitely do.
The, the, the bylaw would be where I think the focus should be, and the regs could follow very quickly and very easily. Change the bylaw first.
Mm-hmm.
In conjunction with CONCOM, and, um, I, I'll tell you, that, that's not something I see happening by May. I don't see that, CONCOM meets once a month, I mean.
Well, why is it so critical that you wanted, wanted to combine it?
Um, just because they do the same calculations we do, Tilly. And, um, the erosion control and the stormwater bylaws are so, so blended, and sometimes it's us, sometimes it's them. Uh, think of the poor contractor that walks in and, uh, the applicant walks in and he's essentially dealing with the same town with two different sets of standards.
But they're.
How does that work?
But they don't have, don't they have, don't they just use the same standards we use, don't they turn to our standards?
Hmm. That's the bylaw.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
So it's the bylaw, and the writing of the bylaw is the, um, uh, purview of the, uh, planning board. And it's not that I'm saying that, that the conservation commission, uh, it's not, they're not important to them, they don't look at them as being important. But that it's the planning board's jurisdiction on that and not the conservation commission's jurisdiction. In terms of developing it.
Um, in, in terms of developing it, yeah.
We could get feedback from them, but not, not, not say we're just gonna share the process going down the line and try to ju- dug, dovetail our schedules.
I just think it would be for the betterment of the town to have the board work on the bylaw, and by virtue of that work with the CONCOM, because after, should the town choose to change the bylaw, at that point, then CONCOM regs and planning board regs would have to change, and you'd want those to change identically, in concert. And pretty much on the same timetable, so that you wouldn't have someone one lagging behind the other, and put someone in a catch twenty-two that says, here's your set of standards for your planning board approval, here's your set of standards for your CONCOM approval, because now you're making the act and play ping pong, you're, you're making them a ping pong ball.
You gotta do both, you can't do both.
And you did, okay, and.
You should do both.
Right.
You, you definitely.
Real closely.
Okay, or help, help, help me understand again, 'cause I'm just, I'm not getting it, um, so let, taking for example, um, uh, stormwater calcs that say, uh, you need to meet the five, ten, fifteen year based on boom, boom, boom.
Right.
So that standard is, um, in the bylaw, and it's what both the planning board and, um, the conservation commission turn to, correct?
Because it's in their regs, it's what they turn to.
Right, so don't, don't their regs, they'll just say that to, to, don't they just reference the bylaw, they, they don't repeat the whole bylaw word for word?
I don't believe we do.
So, could, 'cause maybe that's the way. So, could, cause maybe that's the way, I'm just, I'm, I'm striving to see if there's any way we can, we can accomplish it, I'm just trying to explore that. Cause if they couldn't say, cause if their language is that, you know, uh, you know, per the ordinance, if we're writing the ordinance and there is no confusion.
I- i- if, the, and, and so this doesn't keep spinning on the wheel, I can certainly look at to see what the issues in the coordination would be required.
Okay.
And be able to have that at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, it's clearly defined, we're gonna notice to do storm water in the beginning of January, or, uh, it's, it's gonna be too much, the board will be able to decide at the next.
Okay, that's good.
Because it's, it's what exactly is the overlap?
Yeah.
Is gonna help decide.
Uh, for sure.
I'm sure.
For sure.
Yeah, honestly, I think that the, the, uh, the professional applications that we've gotten on subdivisions, which was the only one we had, really, they're gonna look at both laws, if they, if they are going to be a little different, and they're gonna, you know, work with both of them. They have the expertise to do that. The, and the Conservation Board only deals with, within a hundred foot buffer, right? Ours is, is way beyond that. And I think the planning board by taking the responsibility of adjusting the bylaw will be the lead players, and they'll have to, if they find it difficult in Concom, they will come along with our recommendations.
I, I, I think, I, I, I think, um, I think it's a great suggestion to, to do it that way, Tilly, I, I think you, you know, it's a good point, Tilly, and I, I think Howard can come back with, with what these issues are to the next meeting for us to.
So, alright, I've got solar, the use schedule, which are nearly done, storm water, and then we'll see what happens with accessory apartments.
What happened with wind? Wind is just two?
I think you need to get, yeah. Just stick with solar.
Solar, storm, use, and what else?
Uh, solar use schedule definitions, which are nearly done.
Yeah.
Storm water will be confirmed at the next meeting, and then we'll see where the accessory apartment bylaw is at the next meeting.
That was it, accessory, oh, accessory, okay, what about affordable housing?
That, that's the accessory apartment.
Alright. Okay.
Are we gonna be able to get input? And, and this is, this is probably a, a question to you, Howard, and, and to Tilly, and just an open discussion, and I, I think we may have touched upon this discussion once or twice and with no resolution. When, when we go, if we go, to change the, um, accessory apartment bylaw, given that the ZBA is the permitting authority for that, are we gonna be able to take information from the ZBA and work with them? Or are we, i- is that not how we envision the process working?
No, I think, I think the, the lead players are the task force. They, they've already discussed it with the ZBA, I don't know what happened, you know, they resolved.
They're discussing it with the ZBA, and, and what, one of the evolution of it is, is that it's gonna be a whole separate section, it's not gonna be modification to the existing one.
Yeah.
Eh, because there's a lot more that needs to be done, so it'll be a separate one, and that's being worked out with the zoning board right now, there's still more questions that need to be answered. Um, and I'm gonna start getting involved with it again, to see if I can help facilitate that, so by the time it comes to the planning board, it'll have gone through the zoning board, and maybe it might have to be bounced back once or twice with some of their clarifications, but.
That, that, that's my concern, I, I, I don't like this board having a hearing that changes a bylaw that puts the onus on of another board to do something that they may or may not have the, um, the resources to accomplish.
I, well, that's, that's true, I think what I witnessed was that the, the change or the additional, uh, part of it, it's not really a change to what's already on the books. They foresee a lot more into it than there really is. And basically, it's the state that will be dictating, you know, what transpires, how they go about it, and, and getting the deed right, and all of that, it's not so much responsibility of, uh, them processing, the zoning board processing it. It's just for them to, to, uh, get the documents from the applicant and check it off, you've done this, this, and this, and that's what the task force is gonna tell them they're gonna need.
There's a big learning curve, I, I know I have a big learning curve unless.
I don't think it's that difficult.
I, I do personally, um, that's just me, but, um, so, so, solar, um, use schedule definitions, the storm drainage calculations, that's gonna be determined, you're gonna come back with information on that, and the affordable housing, the same thing, you're gonna come back with information.
Right, and, and I'll offer up the idea that if, if storm water and accessory apartment look like, they're not gonna be able to get started and, and finished, then maybe there, there can be another one we can put on there, there's, there's certainly other concerns.
Yep.
Is, is that ambitious, or?
I think so.
Okay. Okay.
Well, we're gonna start, we're starting.
I don't wanna have any false hopes.
No, we're starting high, and, cause you know we're going backwards.
And if something falls off the plate.
Right.
I've been hearing Cornell University charts. When were we, when were we at that, two years ago? That we should've done it two years ago, now we have the opportunity, let's move it.
Alright.
Go forward.
Um.
It's, it's on the list.
They were, um, going to member public reports, um, I had one question, and then I think Howard had a, a one item to add, and we'll be all done, we're gonna get out of here a quarter of. Uh, just, again, question status, have you had any chance to talk with Peter about the, uh, the spot and those tree pits and cutting out concrete and blah, blah, blah? Okay, you got that on your list?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you wanted to add something?
Uh, the, the board, this, this isn't for, uh, informal discussion, but the, the, the board recalls, um, the application of the site plan over at the, um, Tressa Way, where the, the kindergarten located to the first floor. And the kitchen designer, uh, located to the, the elevator, correct, for the universal access. And he came back, eh, I'm giving a very quick overview. Uh, he came back after a year and said, I'm having a hard time getting this universal access ramp in, it's not a simple hand crank, it needs to be enclosed, the expense. And, um, he went to the state and got an advisory opinion about not requiring it, and the decision the board wrote stated, you need to put it in and you have a year to do it. And after the back and forth, the end result was, the board said, you can either come back and, uh, tell us that you've put it in, or you can come back and request, uh, that your decision be modified. He has come back and submitted an application for modification to his approved site plan. And, um, I'm gonna hand these drawings out, I need the board to discuss and to decide if they're gonna consider this modification to the decision in the approved site plan, um, to be minor or major. If it's minor, we can discuss and take care of the application in a public meeting, if the board decides that it's major, then I'm gonna have to post it as a public hearing.
Can you clarify the letter that he got from the state, what it said?
I thought we already finished that, I'm, I'm really surprised, what is he coming forward now?
Howard, can you, can you, can you just remind me?
I- i- in the material that he submitted is, is the application form, uh, the plan, and he provided, um, copies of the letter, um, from, uh, requesting information from his architect, uh, an affidavit uh, regarding the, um, advisory opinion.
And they said?
Uh, I am writing to inform you, we have received a request for an advisory opinion regarding the lack of access to the office space in the basement, the letter stated the daycare on the first floor is fully accessible, basement office used, uh, as an employee-only workspace. The board reviewed the submittals and voted to accept the submitted affidavit and plans, on the condition that both the affidavit and associated plans shall be recorded, and they have, uh, with the understanding that the affidavit applies to the current use only, basement cannot be used by the public, but only by employees of crime treatment grab.
So, the state that is responsible for this issue is saying he doesn't need it?
That's my take from it as well.
Okay, okay.
This is from the Architectural Access Board, the ABA.
I, I'm just trying to hold to our, I, I, my opinion is that this would be a minor, with the state having taken that issue off the plate.
I didn't think he needed to apply anymore. I just, I thought it was over when he came in last time with that letter.
No, the board stated to him, you can either, you can either submit us a modified, uh, an application to modify, or you put it in, so, he's gotten back.
We voted at the time, though, there was a vote after that, the gentleman came in. And that's why I thought it was over.
The, the, the board didn't vote on, on modifying, cause they didn't have anything to look at to show that it was being modified.
Yeah, he brought in the letter, I saw the letter.
He brought in a letter, but he didn't bring in anything the board could vote on.
Okay.
The board reviewed and submitted, by Nap Designs, and accepted it, as long as you record them, so. That's pretty good for me.
Howard, um.
Do you remember, Harry?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at an application for modification to a site plan, and, um, the modif- the proposed modification requests the deletion of the exterior lift shown on plan in detail one. Uh, the lift was shown in response to a site plan condition relating to providing universal access to the basement level. That was one of three conditions, if I remember correctly. And I think what we're, what we're deciding tonight, if, if I'm not mistaken, is whether this is
Well, to come back.
Is a major modification or an insignificant modification, as it says.
Not deciding tonight necessarily, is that correct?
You, you're not deciding on the modification, you're just establishing an opinion about if this is a minor or a major.
So, you do need that tonight?
I, I do, cause I'll, it.
Okay, okay.
The issue is whether it's a public meeting or a public hearing.
Exactly.
If there's a hearing, you have to post it.
I, I have to notice it if it's a hearing.
Right, but, but that's really the only.
Right.
Is there any difference?
The board's gonna discuss and debate on the application, but I need to know if the board's gonna determine the application to be for substantial, or.
Aside from.
Inconsequential.
Aside from the determination of whether it's a public meeting or a public, uh, hearing, uh, is there any other, uh, procedural or, um, issue that, uh, would be driven by whether it's major or minor?
I, I think so, I, I think, I think, um, the state that is responsible for this request that he's wanting to modify, which is this lift, the state is saying, you'd, basically, they're willing to accept that as long as these documents are recorded, and that he doesn't have to do it.
Well, he already recorded the, the letter, cause there was a stamp on that letter.
But that was.
He recorded it from the MS.
It, it, it's been recorded. Yeah, eh, I, I guess to, to help the board understand, the end result is gonna be what form is the board going to modify the decision? You gonna do it at the next meeting, in, in a public meeting, or you gonna have it noticed, so you can discuss the site plan and accept the modified site plan, get the decision modified, both of which you'll need to go, have recorded.
Do you have a recommendation?
Not noticing it makes more sense. I would say not noticing it makes more sense too, the only problem with that is that to do that, I have to say that this is an insignificant modification, and given that the other two conditions, the only other two conditions that were placed on this were, I think, a no parking sign and some paint strips in the parking lot. I have to be honest, this was, this was a pretty big one for me. You know, whether, whether or not, if I recall, whether or not this gentleman could use the basement, at least from my perspective, was based upon the idea that there was universal access to the basement, so, in, in, in good, good faith, I, I can't say that this is insignificant. I have to call this major. I just can't call that insignificant.
What are the others? I.
I kind of would like to, I wished I had known about it, I would've looked at my minutes to see, but when the gentleman came last time, was he just wanting to know what we thought, or was that the modification?
Eh, he, no, he, he came back to the board to, to keep the board updated about where he was and getting that condition of the site plan met. And then he said, through his research of finding out what kinda lift to put in, um, he, eh, the, the cost was going up because it had to be enclosed. And then he said, if I put it inside, then it's gonna change the, the, the floor space ratio for the kindergarten school, so what he did was he went to go to the, his architect went to the state to find out, do I need it, and if I need it, what type can I put in? And so he got the letter and came back and said, I've been told, uh, I don't need it, I'd like to modify the site plan. And the board said, you can either put it in or come back with an application.
And the state, the state said, in essence, that, that not doing this is not a violation of the ADA.
They gave him a waiver, that's what it was.
As long as it's, as long as it's for his use, that's why it needs to be, no public, and that's why it needs to be recorded with the D in part of the, in registration.
Six or less employees or something like that.
As long as the use is the same, the business is the same, and it's, uh, for private only, and that they don't start seeing.
No public access.
He's the only one that could be there, right? He's the only one that could be in the basement.
That is no public access to the lower level.
The public home is served at that location.
I think we're drifting.
Well, but it's part of, it's part of the discussion.
Whether it is, in my mind, whether.
This is minor to me.
Well, if, if it's not in violation of the ADA, and the state says it's alright, then to me it's minor.
Yeah, me too.
It, and, but, but to, to, to add to what you just said, the it, it's in itself, it's minor? I think that's what a lot of people thinking, but to Harry's point, there are only three conditions in the decision, and this was a big one. So, in that viewpoint, it is a major, cause, cause it's, it's, it, are you taking it, uh, project-wide, are you taking it to what the other conditions that the board put in?
Does it, does it warrant a reopening of a, or opening of?
Well, it'll be a new one.
What is, what is your, what is your opinion?
To what end?
What is your recommendation to the board?
Uh, I, I think that it's.
Guys, guys, guys?
I, I think it's, it's a minor, but it ought to be noticed as a public hearing, so all the evidence he's presented can be entered in, in that format.
I have no objection to that, I mean, really.
Alright, I have no objection to that either.
Air on the side of caution.
If it boils down to making the notice or not making the notice, make the notice.
Make the notice, alright, makes, yeah, sure, okay, alright. Uh, do I hear a motion to?
You do, I'm gonna adjourn. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I beat him to that motion.
No, no. Moved and seconded by those parties concerned?
Everybody is cousin.
Oh, before you go, we have parting gifts.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want this back?
No, I want you to hold those, cause you'll need those for the public hearing.
Oh, slick dude, great job, Mary Ellen.
That's, that's.
Look at this, look at this. This is the real deal.
Did you get, you're getting one.
Oh, I'm getting one, you're wild.
Did you get back the sign, who's it?
Oh, good, more stuff.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, more stuff.
Wow.
That's fantastic.
Check the forty-eight.